John?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance?
Nate?
Here.
She's here?
Nate's right there.
He's gonna have... That's all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, united and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, come on in Nate. And how are you tonight?
I thought it was on time. Guess I'm pretty bad.
Oh, you are, because my computer only says 6:59.
Oh.
Look at that clock. They should know better, shouldn't they?
Yeah, I'm early, according to that, too.
Okay. Public input, this time and place for anybody that wishes to say something that's not on the agenda.
Concerned just agenda.
You what? Just sit back down. We're not ready for you yet. No, we're gonna do the consent agenda.
Drayton would like to speak to you guys regarding 3C.
So, Halloween is on 31st, and we have our, in the Halloween town that we do every year for the kids, so I'm here to ask you guys, or to get permission to close down East Main to West Main. And we're thinking 3:00 PM to roughly 8:00 PM, maybe 8:30 on that day, the 31st. That'll give us plenty of time to set up what we haven't set up already, and it'll give us a little bit of time to take down some of the things that we'd like to, once it's all over.
Will you be needing this half block here?
Yeah.
This one?
Washington, too.
Any questions for him?
Nope.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Good to go.
Motion on consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public input, now you can come on.
I would like to introduce you guys to Jake Lindauer, the Major Director of Lisbon Mount Vernon Ambulance Service. Let's just go on Jake's CD for a few minutes.
Well, first off, I want to say it's a pleasure to be able to be in Lisbon, Mount Vernon Communities. I've got some experience with both communities through sporting events, as well as being able to participate in Sour Cove Days this summer, which was quite a festival. So, it's always fun to see and make sure the community really kind of engage their community members. I'm really looking forward to bringing in some experience I have with system development and not only modernizing our ambulance service, but making sure that we keep the quality service we have and continue to improve the quality. And definitely taking input from the Lisbon City Council, as well as the community members, to make sure that the ambulance is really a community-based service and serving their communities to the best of its abilities.
Well, we're glad to have you.
If you need anything, please reach out, sir.
Okay.
All right. Smoke on board.
Also, I'd like to introduce, this is Chris Coleman, our new city worker here. He'll be starting, I think, November 1st. Is that right, Chris?
Yes.
So, I told him he had to come down. He's the first one, never do it.
(laughing).
Just for that, he's not going turkey hunting.
Welcome.
Right. Thank you.
All right, you can go now.
All right.
Okay. Anything else? And miscellaneous items, announcement of the grant?
Just wanted to let you guys all know, if you hadn't heard yet or read the paper, that we did receive the REAP grant in the amount of $75,000, which will be used to purchase property, and we'll talk about it in detail a little bit later.
Okay, congratulations. Approval of bid for replacement of sewer and server and two computers.
Mine might be getting better, but your reading sucks.
I know, I should've worn my other glasses.
We had budgeted, when we did the last, this year's budget, to replace the server. Our server is old, and the warranty is no longer valid on it, so we had budgeted around $10,000. I was able to, the first bid came in a little higher, so we had to try to bring it back down to where we had budgeted for. So, the budget's in front of you. It did come out to $10,602.75. This will last us probably about five years. The warranty's usually run for five years, so then at that time, we'll have to budget again. We went with a little bit different than the one we have, just because of working with, we're getting ready to do an upgrade that's not going to be any cost to us with our ENCODE or our software service. So, this Brad from Access worked with ENCODE to make sure that everything we're going to have is going to be compatible with our software program, so that's all been taken care of. We also budgeted to replace two of the, I think we have eight or nine PCs. They all were purchased at the same time, so they're all aging at the same time, so we figured that if we replace a couple this year, maybe one or two next year, and just spread it out a little bit. Those came out a little bit higher than I think we had anticipated, so we can look at those and approve those tonight, or we can continue to look. It's up to you.
So, these two bids that are in the packet, are those just for the server?
The server, yep.
Okay.
So, you said the first one was 10 something?
$10,602.75.
So, what's the total? 11,440?
That's with, that includes what we pay already for the support.
Right.
So, actually, if we get this server for the $10,000, our monthly support will go down just a little bit. If we go to the second option, which is, it's a, it's a different, it's a little better server, and it's able to, with this one, you're able to add on to it easier, but I did not foresee us needing to add on anything, because we're not going to increase the number of employees anytime soon that are going to be on a computer. I mean, we added Krista, but he's, they have one computer at the city shop, so I didn't feel that we would need to update our system within that five years anytime soon, so I thought we were safe to go with the lower bid, unless there's something that you guys know of.
Is the current server broken?
No.
I mean, is it just the warranty's up?
If it would, if it would fail, then there would be no warranty, so we'd have to probably replace it at that time.
Okay.
So, it's either, it's either replacing it when it's not broken, or, and have no downtime, or if we would, if it would break down, then we would have probably a two or three or four-day period where we'd have to get the new one in and get it up and running.
Well, I mean, there's nothing preventing a new one from breaking and being down for two or three days. I don't understand what...
Well, typically, your cycle is about five years for the life of any of that. Five years is your cycle most of the times, even with PCs. They'll do them five years, and then you upgrade. I mean, as they get old, you know, they slow down, they get harder to maintain, and she's right, if something goes wrong with it, then, you know, it's worth paying out of pocket for that. So, I mean, that could be...
Paying out of pocket for this?
Well, right, but we budgeted for it. It's not like we're trying to figure out where we're coming up with the money. We already budgeted for it. We were proactive in doing this, and a lot of places do do that. It's not like we're just saying, oh, we want a new computer, you know, we're going to get it.
That's what it sounds like.
You know? Well, it's not. I mean, we budgeted for it. We knew that we were going to need it, so we budgeted for it. So, I don't understand what your qualm is.
It's a lot of money for a server.
Well, servers aren't cheap. I mean...
And I don't know that much about it, so I rely on what I'm being told, so if anybody has any more knowledge than that, please share it with me, because, like I said, I just know how to push the keys. It's kind of like the car. I just know how to get in, turn the key, but...
Didn't Access tell us we needed to do this?
In our evaluation that we had two years ago, they did tell us that it was...
So, how long's this server, how long's this one good for then?
It would be for five years. The warranty would be good for five years from the date that it's installed.
So...
And we can, we could go and use the one we have now, but it's...
So, in five years, we get another new one.
In five years, we would have to...
We basically upgrade every five, we budget for a new one every five years.
Technologies outdate. I mean, it's, that's, you've got to look at that, too. We bought that one, we bought that one... How long you been mayor?
It's been, it was right after we moved into here.
Six years?
Into here.
Must be seven years, go one more year.
And I think we bought it before you came on.
No, we bought it right when we moved into this building.
2012.
Okay, yeah.
2012 was when we did, I'm pretty sure. And we are having a lot of problems right now with slowness. Our systems are running slow. We're using up a lot of space in our computers, and I think a lot of it is now that Ricky's using the cameras, the piece of front's using those cameras, and we're storing all of that, that information.
Does this come with offsite storage?
I think he has something. Can you guys have any other storage up there? It's just on the system? So, that's something we might need to check into, but I did ask him about that, and he said that for the computers that we're not going to, the PCs we're not going to replace this year, what we could do for about $75 is we could add on to the ones that we have to give them some more space. So, I was going to have, was going to have him look into that a little more detail, $75 if we can get some more space, and, because ours right now, I know our internet is slower for some reason, but this is even when we're not on the internet, when we're just in our programs and stuff, they're starting to run a lot slower. So, he did print off, they give me a monthly report now, and right now, on a lot of our PCs, we're up to, we're, we've used, some of them, one of them 70%, a couple of them are only 34%, but some of them are above 50% of space that we've used. So, we've got space still available, but they're just starting to run a little slower.
Is this server also where we store video from, the park cameras?
It handles everything.
Because that's something new we've added in the last five years, too.
Okay, we need to make a decision here. What do we undo?
I'll move to approve the bid for $11,440, or $442.71.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Motion, second. Any more discussion? Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis? Okay, approval of pay estimate number six, final one, for WRH Inc. for WWTP improvement in UV disinfection in the amount of $16,007.4.
I would like to request a motion to table this one, due to the fact that the lights that were supposed to have been replaced have not been replaced yet, so we do not want to pay this last payment until those have been taken care of.
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Action, discussion impossible, action on banners for utility poles along Gillette.
I've been working with Brett Rickard on some type of design to put on the ITC poles on Gillette Lane. We came up with some ideas for some metal banners instead of the vinyl or cloth that usually only lasts a couple of years. Since that is an open area, that's going to have a lot of wind going through there right now. We didn't think they would last that long. So, he came up with some designs for some metal banners that, they'll start out silver, but through the, through the years, they'll rust just a little bit. There's seven poles out there, and for these, he estimated the cost would be about $450 each with a $50 installation. He's the only one I've checked with so far. But we, what we could do is we could design them all the same, we could design them all different, or we could come up, we did, we could do something like I did with the benches downtown that we, the city purchased, and then we had somebody sponsor those. We could have, like, maybe if Matt Pack wanted to sponsor a wrestler, or, you know, some organization wanted to sponsor one, we could go that route. There's just a lot of options out there. So, first of all, I put it on the agenda just to see if this is what you guys would want to do, or if you want me to look at the possibility of doing something else.
So, like you mentioned, Matt Pack, like, it shows in our packet, the Lisbon Wrestler. So, would that be miscellaneous, so they'd have to order two of them? Because it says miscellaneous designs in quantities of two. Quantities of two.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'd have to have two. I didn't catch that.
So, is that, whatever we decide, you're going to get two?
We'd have to do two of it.
Two's no matter what? I mean, is a Lisbon, is this Lisbon?
Yeah.
So, does that mean it has to be two? It doesn't have to be two of the same one, does it?
I can double-check them. Let me see how it reads. Each pole might be a little different. Miscellaneous designs in quantities of two.
Meaning they have to do two, 2468, not 1357?
I'm not sure if he meant if you order one design, you have to order two of that design, or if you can only order in quantities of two. I can double-check.
Yeah, I might want to find out. Is there a possibility of getting this same type of sign colored or powder coated of something like that, rather than having them rust?
I'm sure it's possible. I can double-check them to see what the difference in the price would be. He did on the Lisbon emblem, he tried to come as close as he could, but he said he has to be really careful about how many, the detail, because the smaller the detail, the thinner the metal is, and the easier it would...
Bridge will get too small and break.
Yeah, that's it.
It'll break.
Exactly.
Do you see the rust running down the pole someday? By not getting a painted sign like you suggest?
Um...
This rusts, and the rust runs off there, and then starts running down the galvanized pole?
It could. They're not going to sit flush on the pole, are they? They're going to be off the pole, kind of like how our banners are.
Did I give you one of these?
They show it here.
You can see them right there.
Yeah, but I can't see it that hand.
You can't really blow up that well.
Yeah.
So, they, they would stick out from the pole.
They show it, they show it flush here.
Yeah, they show it flush on the one drawing.
The poles taper.
I mean, the holders we put up there, they, unless they're changing them, will have to sit off of the pole.
Okay. So, it's, yeah, so it'll be kind of like the banners we have downtown?
It'll go down.
Yeah.
So, do you want me to check to see if they can power?
Rainstorm.
Yeah.
It might push that rust off onto the pole.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's something we don't need to decide tonight.
No, not tonight.
I do like the idea, you know, reach out like to Matt Pack, you know, if they want to do it, do something like that, or, you know, some farmer wants to put a farming decal or something, you know...
How do we recognize their donation? Put a plaque at the, on like the base of the pole?
I don't think we really could, though. The design would pretty much be...
Be, yeah.
I mean, if you put that lion wrestler up, it would pretty much be...
You know it's the Matt Pack.
And I could see what's supplying the banner holders for us.
Yeah, and they're up. So, I'd, yeah, go ahead and look into what, you know, if they do some kind of a color powder coat, something like that, that is, you know, will hold up to the weather a little bit.
I know they do. I saw them at the state fair someplace.
The metal sign?
Yeah, I think I've seen them somewhere, too. I just can't remember.
Well, that one is, so...
I was looking for a fishing one for the cabin.
Okay, I'll double-check with him, and we'll talk about it again at the next meeting.
All right.
Okay. Approval of pump repairs in exceeding $5,000.
I asked Travis to come and talk to you about this. We've been having some issues with the pumps at the sewer plant, and it's, the cost has gone above and beyond what I can authorize, so I thought it'd be best if it was time that he kind of explained to you guys what's going on.
All right, we have three pumps and two tanks, and one we rotate out once a year. We do our yearly service. It's a contract. They come in, they pull the pumps, and we rotate one out of service, one into service, and then at that time, we take it back with them, check it out, make sure there's nothing, nothing with the impeller and that. Well, in the last six months, we've lost two of them. Part of them to do is with the amount of clean water we have running through our system, without getting a better, you know, solids, our act as lubrication for these parts, clean water will actually allow it to cavitate, and this is the impeller. And as you guys can see, what it's doing is it's just eating them up. And when this impeller starts to get ate up, it'll start to vibrate, and that'll take the seals out of it. So, there's nothing, I mean, as far as, these things are 13 and a half feet underwater. We got, we got safety gauges on them for when a seal fails and all that, but it's not as simple as when a seal fails, we can just pull it up, put a new seal in. You've got to take the whole thing apart. I talked to, we had one at our normal company we were using, and they had it for over a month, and then I had to go to another company because we lost our second pump to get this one done. They've actually replaced, the one for an electric pump has replaced the impeller with what they call a, pretty much a bulletproof impeller, to where we shouldn't have to have that anymore. They ended up replacing the shaft. They saw some machine work on the shaft where, you know, there could have been something, you know, previously that we had to do. So, we're hoping we got the problem fixed. It's just, right now, we've got, you know, we're going to have two pump bills here that we've been sitting on without, without any real good reason.
What did you say that wear was from?
Well, that wear there, grit can cause it, cavitation, and too much air in the system. Basically, air is what keeps the bugs happy and keeps the bugs going down there. When we get heavy rains and we have a lot of ionized system, there's more clean water coming through there than what is, than the dirty water, and it creates different density of the water, which will allow that to happen. So, basically, the dirtier the water, the better it is for the pumps that are in there.
And the bulletproof impeller, what, stainless steel, something different?
I forget the name of what it's called. They've, I mean, they've stood behind it. They, they knew right away when they pulled the other pump, they, they could look at it, and they said, yeah, you guys, these are the old styles, came out '04, we should've been switching to these five, six years ago, they said.
In the past, we've mostly rebuilt the pumps when we had issues, so now we're at the point where we have to replace them.
Didn't we buy some pumps not too long ago?
We did through the FEMA project when we had the floods.
Right. This, that was one of the three. We rebuilt them. I don't think we bought it. We rebuilt it.
Yeah, we rebuilt them.
Okay. The life expectancy of them?
He says more than a year, but he can't say because of the conditions they work in. I mean, these things run 24/7.
Are you talking about the new ones or the old ones?
Yeah.
The new ones?
Yeah, I mean, the impeller, obviously, longer than what we've been getting out of them. The new rebuild should last longer than what we're getting out of them. They're actually certified flight parts. Everything's going back in a straight OEM parts to OEM specs, where before, we were trying to get by a little cheaper using aftermarket parts, and it did fine until this last, last year, and we've been taking it in the shorts.
And so, is this the rebuilt one or two?
Two. This is one.
So, this invoice for...
So, we've got the 5,800 bucks and the 6,400 bucks.
Yep.
That one, which is...
So, we technically have one pump sitting down there as a replacement that's just, just got dropped off and is ready in case another one fails.
Okay.
So, that was the first fail, the MVP. An electric pump was the second one.
So, the EP one is for 5,800.
Yep.
And then there's another for 120. And then there's another one for 6,400.
Yeah, the 120 was, they pulled the pump for me and looked while they were out here.
Okay.
That is what that one was.
Okay.
That's a completely different pump than, than this one.
Okay.
Than these two. And then the 6,400 is the other one, then, Mississippi Valley Pump. So, you have two. You have the 64 and the 58.
And they've both been fixed?
Yep, they're both fixed. The plant can't operate without them. We're kind of, it's, that there is a major cog in the wheel for us.
Yeah.
Okay, what do we undo?
So, who, who usually repairs them?
Mississippi Valley.
And they couldn't get to it solely?
They, no, they just, we kept getting pushed in the back burner and in the back burner, and they couldn't give me a good reason as to what was going on with them. So, then Connie and I talked, and I said, you know, electric pump is where we purchased them from when we built the plant. I'd like to, you know, bring those guys out and talk to them. And, I mean, between, you see the price difference. I mean, that's obviously who we're going to start using from now on.
I guess you need a motion to pay both bills, right? Or all three bills?
We got to pay them no matter what, so...
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to pay them both.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Discussion impossible, second reading of ordinance, 09/2018, changes to the 165.23 sign ordinance.
That was just where we changed it from 17 feet to 20 feet for the maximum height.
Motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Travis, aye.
I'll make a motion to...
I had to think of my name there.
Go into the third reading.
Okay, we have a motion to go in third reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. We'll start with you, Travis, first. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug? Do I have to read the ordinance again?
One more time for the third and final reading.
Okay, discussion impossible, third reading, or placing, blah, blah, blah. Possible suspension of rules and placing on third and final reading.
Yeah, we just placed it, so we just need to...
Is that right?
This is the third reading.
Make a motion that we pass it with the third reading.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug? Public hearing for changes to the water ordinance. We need to open the public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Amy, do you have any questions?
This would be the one I went over last time, just to allow for mechanical failure.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to go to public hearing.
Motion to go out. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion impossible, first reading of ordinance, 08/2018, changes to the water ordinance.
I'll move to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion is second.[1621.51] Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Going to public hearing on the sewer ordinance.
Motion to go to public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion, okay. Public hearing is open, any comments?
Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put it on the water. Discussion impossible, first reading of ordinance, oh, seven, two, oh, eighteen, changes to the sewer ordinance.
Motion to approve first reading?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Resolution, seventy-three to eighteen, to certify lien for curb stop repairs.
We had a curb stop that had to be repaired, we talked to the people about repairing it, and they chose to allow us to do it. We sent them notification of the cost, and we didn't receive payment, so then Christina sent them a thirty day notice that it would be a lien set against it, and they did not respond within the thirty days, so we would like to certify it to their property tax.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, I would like to change G through.
Aye.
Yeah, through I, to follow all the reports.
Uh, uh.
Do we have a motion for that?
Motion through to do that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business?
Don't have anything.
Okay, correspondents?
Don't have anything there either.
Okay, city engineer report?
I'll touch it up with mine.
Okay. Go ahead, Travis, Public Works.
All right, we got probably another week and a half, maybe two weeks left of the lining projects going on. The manholes now are getting, the new castings poured in on the top, so you'll see a bunch of cones with the, just sitting around a manhole. So the plan is they're going to get five or six pulled out one day, the next day they'll get them poured, and then the third day, they should be able to pull the cones off of those. Everything seems to be moving, moving in the right direction with that. Other than that, we did get our, the repurposed fire truck back, we still have some lights that are red and blue that we need to get switched out. We started leaves today and found out that the machine we purchased for leaves has a little more, a little more power than what we expected, so it's blowing out our, out of the vents, so it's a lot of trial and error. This first go around is probably going to take us a little longer to get the leaves picked up, but, I mean, we knew we were going to have this, we never did this before, and we took two, two units that weren't normally used together, and we're making them work. So I think, I think hopefully after tomorrow, we'll have a pretty good handle on what we need to do and move in the right direction, but other than that, everything seems to be working fine for that.
So when's all the patches get done, the asphalt and stuff?
So Jackson Street, they keep, what, they six times now, it feels like they've told us, say the Jackson and Main, that they'd be here. So I, it's a completely different company than the other ones. They're supposed to be here this week on that one. All the other patches, they just came and measured up and got painted up, so I'm assuming Thursday, I don't know.
Because they're supposed to be done first week in November, first full week in November?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
So.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Amy, do you have anything for the police chief's report?
Chief Scott said that you guys had inquired about a dog bite that showed up on the report last meeting. He just wanted me to tell you that that was a dog bite of a domesticated animal, and per the ordinance, he said that the dog has to bite a domesticated animal twice before it can be ordered out in the city. So the dog had come onto the other dog's property, the dog bit the other dog, that's one. So it's been documented, reports made, and that's the only reason why it hadn't been watched yet.
Okay, thank you. Our chief report?
I think they have a meeting tonight, so.
City administrators' report?
The only thing I have tonight is I had the honor of attending the, what do they call it? Uptown Theater Gala Saturday night. It was a very nice event that they put on, there was five people that, well, six people